Hello and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this July 8, 2025. We are now at the public comment portion of our meeting and I will turn things over to our county manager, excuse me, our county attorney to square this off, say it has nothing to do with public comment.
Thank you Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comments, appropriate to review some of those related meeting rules. When you come forward, if you would, please state your name and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. All comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board but an opportunity for the speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And there is a podium, excuse me, there is a timer on the podium to keep track of your three minutes. First speaker is Denny Wilson.
Hello again, Denny Wilson, District 4. I'm using my comment today to speak about the homeless situation in Cobb County. I got up this morning and did something that I hadn't done in a long time. I watched the news. I stopped watching the news about eight years ago and I don't even turn my TV on to it because it's always so depressing. But anyway, this morning I watched the news. And on the news, they talked about an area in Atlanta that they're closing down to where they're moving the homeless people out. It was the area where the guy was bulldozed over. They didn't know that he was there and they bulldozed the area and he was killed. Well, they're cleaning that area out next week. And guess where those people are gonna come? They're gonna come here to Cobb County and we're gonna have a serious problem with the homeless even more than what we have now. So we've got a young lady that's running for office in the city of Mableton who made a comment last week about the police victimizing homeless people. And that is not the case. And I know so because I have worked with our Cobb Police to remove homeless people from areas like the one at Glor in Mableton Parkway. I worked with Cobb Police to have that homeless camp removed because the people in that area, you know, were afraid. And some people are afraid of homeless people, some people are not. And I'm one that's not afraid of them because I know pretty much the violent ones. I know the ones who are, you know, not threatening and I know the ones that you just don't approach. I mean, if you live in the area, you live and you learn them. I don't want any harm to come to anybody. And that's why I'm coming here today to let you guys know. I think it's Sweet Street. Yeah, it's the name of the street that City of Atlanta is cleaning out next week. And those people will come across the river and they'll come into Cobb County and probably the first place they'll come will be the Mableton area. And once they leave the Mableton area, they're gonna go up to West Cobb, they're gonna go up to East Cobb. And I think you guys are gonna see a huge increase in the homeless population. So what I'm telling you here and now today is you guys need to come up, you're gonna have to come up with a solution. I mean, because they're gonna come here and there's no other way to get around this. So Atlanta supposedly is working to place some of the people. I think about 38 of them, they said this morning on the news. But what happened to the other hundreds of them that they're not placing? And I promise you, they will end up here in Cobb County. Thank you.
Next public speaker is Donald Barth.
Donald Barth, I think it's still good morning. One of the good things I want to speak about on the good is the service I got from my 911 operator the other week. Wasn't my problem. I get a call from a neighbor, he's gonna shoot his wife. What the hell you calling me for? Call 911. Well, you do it. So I have to call 911 and go third person. I heard this, I heard that. And the operator was fantastic, which helped de-escalate the situation, which could have been even uglier than it was. The bad, the bad is good because the horses were there at the parade at the Fourth of July. The worst part is the horses needed to be at the front of the parade, not at the back of the parade, but our horses, I was very proud to see them. It is possibly a good investment. It is something that Cobb County can use at times. There's always something going on in Cobb. Let's get down to the ugly. Everybody wants to get up and talk about affordable housing. Let's stop right now. Let's get to livable housing. I want to challenge Dr. Jackie over there, I want to challenge you. I want livable housing in all of Cobb County. I want you people to do your job when it comes to government governance. Pass some codes, pass whatever it takes, blight these owners. When I see some of the stuff that people share, it's not livable housing. Well, if they fix it, they're gonna have to go up. No, if we let them treat people like second-class people, they're gonna do it. You hold them accountable. You hold them accountable. I saw pictures of the grass. The grass is knee-high. You know, now it's gonna be Mableton's problem. A lot of that's gonna come out of Cobb County. But I know about Delk Road and some of the apartments are not city, some of them are still holding on to county. Y'all are a lot easier to get by with. All we have to do is tax the hell out of them. Blight tax. You cannot live in a place that looks like some of the stuff they're sharing. Well, we don't. Pour them. No. What happens is the crime rate goes up. As a place gets blighted, we all know that blight brings in crime. Crime means-
Mr. Barth, your time's up. The next speaker is JT Jackson.
Hi there, JT Jackson. Just wanted to say, very excited for the coming All-Star Week. There's gonna be activations all the way down in Druid Hills, all the way up here to Marietta. So it's really gonna be a celebration of Metro Atlanta and our baseball franchise, the Atlanta Braves. One thing I did want to point out was, in my travels to the stadium, on the intersection of Wendy Ridge and Interstate North Parkway, on the east corner, east side corner, east side intersection by Pennant Park, there's a control box that looks like, basically, it looks like a garbage can. And folks traveling to the game, they love leaving their trash on there. And that trash ultimately, you know, gets knocked off of the control box and ends up in Rottenwood Creek, which ends up in the Chattahoochee. So I would love to see a trash can or some solution, maybe changing what that control box looks like on that corner or getting a trash can there so that trash is less likely to end up in our river. One other thing I wanted to point out was, on the Atlanta Braves property, they used to have a bike station where workers and folks go into the game could drop off their bikes, leave them parked. It was a covered station. That's been replaced with paid lockers. I know that's outside of the control of the Board of Commissioners, but, you know, in the conversations that you guys do have with the Atlanta Braves organization, we would really appreciate if, you know, you could challenge them to be better neighbors in that regard and kind of think about the folks that are, you know, their season ticket holders, their shareholders, their employees. You know, it would be completely unacceptable if they just got rid of the Orange Deck parking garage for where people bring their cars. And I kind of feel that same way, being a bike rider two games, kind of feel overlooked. So if, you know, that, if, when having those conversations with the organization, if you could keep that in mind, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Good morning Commissioners, my name's Craig Harfoot. Something that got left out, I didn't email you guys this, but Tesla came up with a modular home. It's a tiny home, it's $7,000. Now, I saw in Cobb County you had, and I really don't believe the county should be giving money to must ministries. I think that they should be funded from, you know, the public on their own. But what they were paying to build some tiny homes was well in excess of the $7,000. And for the $7,000, what I saw is, you need to look it up. It had its own recyclable water system. You can pee in the toilet and it does what our waste treatment plant does. And also with solar power. So something y'all need to look into and catch up because, you know, I know we had all this thing, but about backyards and whatever. But the whole thing goes to, how would you tax a $7,000 home? It's cheaper than a mobile home. You couldn't fund any budget off that. So you're gonna go, ah, we don't want that. But when you keep, you gotta understand, why houses were totally affordable in the 50s, 60s, 70s even, and now they're not, is that when we off the gold standard, that's when the drugs came to America. That's when the banks started laundering the drug money. That's when the houses started to inflate. We didn't produce anything to put money in those bank accounts. It's all drugs. And it's all tied together. And it's like, so, you know, why do we get upset at China for putting fentanyl and killing our drug addicts? Well, hey, where are you gonna get the money? And then Cobb County, what do you do? You put it in Georgia Fund One and you buy Treasuries Fannie and Freddie and all you're doing is inflating the economy. You know, they're gonna print a whole bunch more Treasuries now and there's nobody to buy them offshore. So, you know, this is a real problem. So the whole thing about highest and best use, you know, we gotta start thinking ahead because we're gonna be wiping ourselves out. And this flooding and all, the whole world is covered in satellites, aluminum. And they burn up when they fall in the atmosphere. And the conductivity of the sun to the earth, all energy comes from the sun. And it's getting hotter. And then we get this narrative, oh, it's CO2. That's BS. That's just, everybody breathes out CO2, plants can handle that. But the one thing that isn't aluminum, there was no aluminum 110 years ago. Came with electricity.
The next public speaker is Warren Seegers.
Good morning. My name is Warren Seegers. The matter I'd like to address pertains to this piece of paper here. If you'd like to see a copy of the paper, here you go, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the hard work that you all do here. Seen a lot of figures here today. 2.99, 5.6, 6 point, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars, which is very important to you and the county. Well, I'd like to address 1.3. And this 1.3 is $1.3. And the reason that I'm bringing this to your attention is because what you're looking at here is, and let me start from the beginning. I am a retired correctional officer. And then after being retired for a couple of years, I decided I wanted a part-time job. I looked on your website, I found a part-time job as a part-time crew chief. And I really enjoyed that work. In fact, I would still be there now. But my wife started to get a little sick and I needed to spend more time with her. But the reason I'm here is because of this letter. This is what you gave me, or I was given when you hired me. And it had a salary amount there per hour. And then it said, plus an additional 1.3 for detention pay. I am a veteran skilled correctional officer. I know how to work with inmates. I did. They're not easy to work with, but I am skilled. And I also say that as a crew chief, most crew chiefs there worked with maybe three or four inmates. They would paint around the building or they would clean the bathrooms or they would cut the lawn. I worked in the kitchen and I worked with nine inmates every day. Sometimes as high as 14. And sometimes even more than that. And I can tell you why. That's because a lot of times they used to ask me to take them back, you know, you're going back here, take this one, take that one. And I'm walking down the hallway with 15 inmates. But the reason I'm saying this is because I wasn't able to get my statements for a long time because they were supposed to come to my personal email. Well, they never did. And so one day I finally needed a statement and I told them, well, just send it to my county email. And when I looked at it and I said, well, where's the 1.3? And that's when my supervisor said, well, you're part-time, you don't get 1.3. And that's why I'm here. Okay? Now, you promised me 1.3.
Mr. Seegers, I'm sorry, your time is up. Sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
To disposition this as best as possible. And I don't know if there's anyone here from HR that can speak with this gentleman. Yes, thank you. Our HR manager is at the back. Jim, if you don't mind speaking with him about that matter. Thank you.
That's the final, Chairwoman, that's the final speaker, the public comment portion.
Thank you. We are now at the consent agenda portion of this meeting where we vote on a number of items at the same time. There is not opposition. Commissioners, I'm just reviewing my agenda to see if we have had any changes. I believe we have an addition from our exact session here. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we add the following item to our consent agenda. It is to authorize settlement of the workers' compensation claim on behalf of Con Cosby. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero noting Commissioner Eric Allen is absent. For our Commissioners and our clerk, I'm not observing any other changes. Okay. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Gambrell.
I'd like the clerk to note that I do not support agenda item number eight or 14.
Eight is regarding the autonomous vehicle program and 14, economic development strategic plan. Does anybody else have any comments? All right. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question. The motion carries for zero noting again Commissioner Gambrell's opposition to agenda items eight and 14. Okay, that takes us to the regular portion of this meeting. And our first agency up is the Department of Transportation. Good morning.
Test? There we go. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager Drew Russell with DOT. Seven items for your consideration this morning on the regular tab. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Backbone Infrastructure LLC in an amount not to exceed $995,561.60 for Shallowford Road at Gordy Parkway West, project number B 2306. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $97,459.51 for drainage system repairs on Aspen Wood Court, project number B 22145. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Road Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $179,684 for drainage system repairs on Stonywood Circle, project number B 22170. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Smart Road Technology LLC in an amount not to exceed $684,960 for damaged traffic signal pole replacement at 11 locations, project number B 2593. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Acworth for Nance Road and Acworth-Dewest Road Traffic Study, project number B 2548. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement and supplemental agreement number one to the project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design of Big Shaney Road widening, Cobb County project number B 2431. Approve amendment number one to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the Town Center Community Improvement District for said project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. Call the question. The motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a project framework agreement and a memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design of George Busby Parkway Corridor Trail, Cobb County Project Number B 2438. Approve a Cobb framework agreement with the Town Center Community Improvement District for said project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Our next tab is for Support Services, and we have one matter under Information Technology Services.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this morning is a joint item with DOT requesting your approval of a five-year contract with Century Link Communications LLC for a comprehensive network assessment and modernization of the county's enterprise network and our traffic management network. This item will be partially funded by 2022 SPOLOST Project B 0020. We're requesting your approval of the contract in a total amount not to exceed $3,311,078. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero.
Thank you.
That takes us to our second public comment.
We have no one that signed up for that portion.
Thank you. That now takes us to the Appointment tab, and I believe all of the appointments are announcements for Commissioner Allen, which I will read. I'd like to announce the appointment of Shelley Corgel to Keep Cobb Beautiful. Announce the reappointment of Milton Dorch to the Airport Advisory Board. I'd like to announce the appointment of John Jackson to the Transit System Advisory Board. And announce the appointment of Tracy Stevenson to the 1% Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee. Say that three times fast. All right. And yes, I believe Tracy is here. Is she still here? Yes. Congrats to you and your appointment. That now takes us to our Commissioners' Public Address. We can begin with Commissioner Gamble once her slides have come up on the screen.
Come join us with roving ranger at Cobb Parks. You can join parks at Alatuna Creek on Thursday, July 10th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. for a morning of outdoor fun. Try your hand at archery and plastic axe throwing. Check out wildlife skulls and fur, and test your knowledge with a snake identification game. Don't worry, there's no live snakes. This family-friendly event is perfect for all ages to enjoy animal biophacts and outdoor activities. For more information, you can contact Candace Cook at candace.cook@cobbcounty.org. And lastly, today is Cow Appreciation Day. It's a day to celebrate cows and recognize the important contributions they make to our lives. You can learn more about cows and by supporting our local farmers, you can visit a nearby farm shop and pick up fresh produce instead of heading, heading to the supermarket. It's a great way to give back and enjoy farm-fresh goods. And unlike Dick Yarborough, I do know where Montana is compared to Canada, and in Montana they have more than two cows per every human. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now it takes us to Commissioner Burl.
First of all, we haven't heard the Hyde Farm Mule comment in a while. Thanks, Kelly. We had our 262 adoption over the weekend with our Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program. Mr. McCracken, U.S. Navy, 10 years retired, adopted a French Bulldog mix. And then we also have some specials at the shelter. I know Director Hammond is with us today, but throughout July, you can adopt a dog or cat for $25, and there's puppies, kittens, dogs, all kinds of pets. And they're spayed or neutered, microchipped, and vaccinated, and the cats are FIV and FELV and heartworm tested dogs. So you can go to Cobb County Animal Services, cobbpets.org.gov now for more information. We had our first of three public hearings on the budget and millage, and the next two will be Wednesday, July 16th at 6:30 p.m. in this room, and then Tuesday, July 22nd at our 7:00 p.m. VOC meeting where the final hearing and vote will take place. And it's all listed online. It's hard to believe, but it's been 10 years since the terrorist attack that killed five of our military in Chattanooga. One was from Cobb, Skip Wells. He has a park named for him, he was 21 years old and died in the line of duty, a Marine. So next week, on the 16th, marks the 10-year anniversary of his death. He gave it all for his country. And we will be, we will have a ceremony at the National Cemetery in Canton where he is buried, and the public is welcome to attend. There are some flyers in the back and tells you where it is and what time, and I will be there presenting a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. And Keep Cobb Beautiful has some pop-up recycling events coming. So on Saturday, July 19th at the Civic Center, 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, July 26th at Gritters Library on Shaw Park Road. So you can go to cobbcounty.gov/keep-cobb-beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go to Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Chair. District Four News and Updates. Cobb County Senior Services is excited to partner with the Georgia Council on Aging and host Engage with Co-Age. During these informative sessions, you'll learn about recent legislative outcomes that impact seniors' health care, housing, safety, and rights. You'll also hear updates from the Georgia Council on Aging and the Coalition of Advocates for Georgia's Elderly. Most importantly, you'll discover how to get involved and make your voice heard in issues that matters most. Sessions will be hosted at various senior centers with the kickoff event on July 10th at Freeman Pool Senior Center located at 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. Call 770-801-3400 to register. Are you currently seeking employment? Join WorkSource Cobb for a workshop on July 22nd to learn how to maximize social media for your job search. Understand how and why to control your online presence and set up and manage your LinkedIn profile. Scan the QR code to learn more and register for the workshop. Join the Champions Band as they pay tribute to Queen at the, at this week's Wind Down Wednesday at the Maple House Barnes Amphitheater. The concert starts at 7:00 p.m. and will include classic hits such as Bohemian Rhapsody and Somebody to Love. Lawn terror seats are free and tables are $20. The Kaiser Permanente Summer Movie Series also continues with Cobb Parks, and you're invited to enjoy free movie nights at the amphitheater. There's a great summer lineup to include the Lego Movie this Friday, July 11. Gates open at 6:00 and the movie starts at 7:00. Admission and parking are free on a first-come, first-served basis, rain or shine. To learn more, visit mabelhouse.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And with that, thank you all of you for tuning in today's meeting and participating in our budget hearings. Please note that we have two more left and that we will be voting on the final budget on our fourth Tuesday meeting, which will be here in this room. And with that, hope all of you have a great rest of your week. Our meeting is adjourned.[1489.01]